Also, she's doing a great job.
You can do better than that.
Time to get back to dish and deep.
Yeah.
Did you get?
I got you too.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
You guys ready?
It's at our age.
That's why they draw by now.
Who's the pastime? Call to order. Notice was given of this regular meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons for the city of Bastrop this Thursday, June 13th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the courtroom at City Hall, 202 East Jefferson Street, Bastrop, Louisiana. The first item on our agenda is the call to order. We're going to observe a moment of silence. Uh, we're going to ask that Councilman Shaw lead us in with our invocation and, uh, I will lead the present pledge of allegiance in the absence of Mayor Pro Tim Marvin Moore. Let us stand.
Okay. Let's have a moment of silence, please. Lord, we come to you tonight just thanking you for the many, many blessings that you've poured on us. And Lord, we, we are saddened right now that we have one of our councilmen that, uh, is taking treatment, chemo treatments, and we just lift him up in a special way to you and ask for your healing, and we pray that he'll fight it and, uh, he'll win. And Lord, we just, uh, thank you for this opportunity to do, do our business here tonight. We pray that you be with each one, Lord, and, uh, we just thank thee for the ones who came tonight. Again, thank you so much for all you do for us, in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Ready, salute, say. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance. Ms. Goldman, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Prater?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Green?
President.
Mr. Ross, we are all here, but Mr. Moore.
We have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
Announcements, uh, before we get to the announcement on the agenda, uh, we just pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, oh glory. Tomorrow's Flag Day in this great nation, and, uh, the city of Bastrop, Ms. Goldman informed me that we had some flags that needed to be, uh, retired, correct, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, sir.
And we have approximately, how many, Ms. Goldman? Is it about ten?
Not sure. Probably there.
Yes. And in observation of Flag Day, we arranged for a ceremony across the street, right across from the farmer's market where the old, uh, Regent's Bank drive-through was. So immediately after this council meeting, we're going to go over and we invited the Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, they could not make it because they'd be out of town on, on a trip, and we invited, uh, American Legion Post 501, uh, we invited the Patriot Guard and other groups to come and burn a flag apiece, and we're going to burn one flag tonight. The American Legion Post 501, the Patriot Guard is going to burn a flag tonight, even though Flag Day is tomorrow, but the American Legion standards call for burning at night, and the members could not make it tomorrow night, so we moved it up today, and we have to bury the ashes the next day. So we're going to, uh, probably bury the ashes at the fire, our new fire training ground. And, uh, so anyone that wants to participate in that, uh, ceremony, those ceremonies, uh, tonight, it won't take long, and we invite you across the street, uh, between Madison and Jefferson at the old Regent's. Mr. Dean Blackett gave us permission to use that, that central location, so we appreciate Mr. Blackett for his permission to use that. We also have, um, uh, several other things going on. Ms. Pam Benton, is she here? There's a program going on, uh, we, we teamed up with, uh, New Morning Star Missionary Baptist Church and at the, at the Tech Bastrop, City of Bastrop Technology and Conference Center, 794 Collyer's Lane, we are, uh, having a three-week, uh, camp for student, for kids, and they're going to be doing STEM exercises and a lot more, uh, so that's going to be going on. And does any other council member have any announcements? Further, item three, notice is hereby given in accordance with section 19 dot 1 of Title 42 of the Louisiana Revised Statutes of 1950 as amended, that the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Bastrop, state of Louisiana, acting as the governing authority, the governing authority, in quotes, of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, uh, the city, at its regular scheduled meeting on July 11th, 2019, at its regular meeting place, City Hall, 202 East Jefferson Street, Bastrop, Louisiana, at 6:00 PM, will discuss and consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling for the election to, an election to authorize a 10-year, three-mil property tax, which will be used for the purpose of providing additional support to the city of Bastrop Fire Department and upon approval by the qualified voters there on, therein, for the anticipated avails of such tax to be rendered into bond for such purpose by the city of Bastrop, state of Louisiana. That's an announcement, no action tonight, and we expect the council to decide on this on, on, uh, July the 11th. Public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Does anyone have any public comments as it relates to any item on the agenda? Thank you. Approval of previous?
Somebody in there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, Mr. Bradford, come on up. Wel- welcome, Mr. Charles Henry Bradford, sir. Would you state your name and restate your name and address?
My name is Richard Charles Bradford. I'm in South Washington, speaking in Bastrop.
It's on the bottom, I believe, Charlie.
In Bastrop.
Well, we, we really want to hear you for the record because we, uh, we don't want to miss.
Thank you, sir. Sir, I had a comment on a couple items if I could.
Sure.
Just get some clarification. I'll start with number nine. Due to police shooting, do, have we got a report back? Can I ask a question? I, I'm just concerned, I hear different things in the community, I like clarification, I don't like aggravation. Have they got a state police report back on that, to the city here?
Uh, we're going to bring the chief up, chief, uh, up to assist us with that. It's an item, it's an agenda item, I'll tell you what I'm going to do.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to allow you to, when Mr. Anderson makes his, uh, when Mr. Anderson brings that up.
Mm-hmm.
We'll allow you to ask that question then.
Okay, that's fine.
Because I don't want to get ahead of what Mr. Anderson's.
Right, that's appreciated, Mr. Con, I appreciate that because I didn't want to get ahead, I didn't want to speculate.
But did you want to say anything before he does?
No, 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 I just waited.
Okay.
That'd be, that'd be it. Item number 16, I, I was reading it here, can you give me some clarification, are we in the process of entering into a 15-year agreement with people water or do, can we have some?
The answer to that is no action will be taken tonight, as I understand.
Okay, great.
We're not prepared for that. We have an, we have a, to give, to, to, the, the people supplied us with an agreement that they fashioned.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, it does not have certain provisions in it that I'm sure the council's going to want to address. As an example, when you have a franchise agreement, you give a company, utility company, rights to, say if they had a leak and it's, water's bubbling up out of the road, they have a right to cut, make a cut, and then patch the road. Uh, there's no standards in there. We've gone to a system of patching, we use an infrared asphalt system to get smoother patches. There's a lot that we're going to address in this, and I'm going to work hard on that with council, and, uh, we're looking over their agreement and we're going to look at those and, you know.
Okay.
And, uh, so that's not really ready.
Okay, appreciate it.
We want to be fair with peoples, they've been here a long time, they serve the community well, and, uh, they're good, you know, good partner.
And we still, it's, it's our, I think it's one time, a couple of years ago, maybe last year, we formed a utility commission or something, a committee, a commission, is that still functioning?
Yes, sir, there is a report, the chairman had an accident.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, the chairman of the committee had an accident and could not continue.
Mm.
Um, and, but they did give a report, and, uh, of course, we were going to ask them quite a few questions, we did not interfere with their study, but they did a study, and that report is public.
Public.
Yeah, if you want a copy of it, we'll be glad to give it to you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
We'll give you their report, and it is a pub, public document.
Okay, appreciate it, thanks, I appreciate you, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments as they relate to items on the agenda? Uh, item five, approval of previous minutes, regular meeting, May 9th, 2018, gentlemen?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for our last meeting.
Motion made by Councilman Shaw.
Second.
Second by Councilman Locke, Finance Committee Chair Locke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries, the minutes are approved. Item six, Finance Committee Report, Resolution 19 dash 1833, Bills and Claims for the month of May 2019, uh, Finance Committee Chair Locke, Councilman Locke.
It's been moved that we accept the Bills and Claims, uh, Resolution 19 1833 for the month of May 2019.
It's been moved that we accept this resolution, they will adopt this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by, uh, Finance Committee Chair, Councilman Locke, second by Councilman Shaw, that we, uh, adopt this resolution. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The resolution is adopted. Revenue expense report for April 2019.
This is just a report and no action is needed.
The report is accepted, uh, as no action is needed. Ms. Peppers of 45, 49 Dudup Road, closing parks after dark, Ms. Peppers. Okay. Welcome, Ms. Peppers. Hi.
Thank you. Um, I approached the council members two months ago concerning the closing of the local park.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, at the time, I was looking for a vote, a yes or no vote. I didn't receive it, so I'm back one more time. All I'm asking is, yes, you will close the gates, lock the gates after hours, or no you won't. That's what I'm here for.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Peppers, we didn't ignore you or your request, what I did was, I came back and looked at, because the, the, the concern was security, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. And we, we want the same end, the question is, how do we achieve it? We have, how many, 13 parks?
13.
Yes, we have 13 parks and none of them are closed at night, and you asked specifically for?
Carter Park.
Yes, ma'am. We, it is gated, I went to Carter Park and I took pictures of all the entrances. I asked Ms. Goldman, because we don't have an unlimited budget to run some numbers for my, I, Ms. Goldman, I'm sure you sent me those, but I have not looked at them. I, I just made an, when we talked, I said, "Ms. Goldman, I figure it's going to cost us X amount of dollars."
Yeah.
But you prepared, do you have that?
I didn't bring it because I thought she was going to get a part for it, but, but it was, I took the lowest paid employee and, um, I timed it two hours for 365 days, and with benefits and stuff, I think it was around $7,000.
Yes, and that, those two hours, if we call somebody back to lock them up at night, correct? Then those two hours would be overtime.
Yes, sir.
So there would be two hours at time and a half, so did you account for time and a half?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then we have.
Mayor, excuse me, sir.
Go ahead.
I'm not concerned with any other park than Carter.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the only one I'm interested in.
No, yes, ma'am, but that, if, if we call someone out for 15 minutes, we have to pay them for two hours and two hours at overtime, and that's, that's mandatory. It's, it's part of policy, and we have to pay for, for, uh, three hours of regular pay, and that's the lowest paid employee, and then the fence is so low until if someone wanted to gain access, it's not an optic, obstacle.
Yes.
So we, what we're trying to do, Ms. Peppers, and, and with all due respect, is we're trying to find the right solution. Now, I mentioned the fact that we are getting high-definition cameras that can read a license tag for 300, 300 yards.
Yes, sir.
And?
I heard last time.
Yes, ma'am. And, and, uh, research shows that crime prevention, the greatest deterrent is for, for committing a crime is fear of being caught. And these cameras are the same ones that's on Bourbon Street.
Mm-hmm.
They're the same ones that's used all over New Orleans, the same company that, that, uh, that is to provide these is the same company that does Jefferson Parish and City of New Orleans, and they've been up here three times. And we have, we think we've located some grant money to do this with, primarily with, and it's going to take a little time. Our police department does patrol Carter more than they do any other park. They, uh, is that right, Councilman Green?
Yes, sir. That's right.
Yeah.
Mayor, that is all well and good, I'm not against it, I'm all for it. My deal is, I realize it will not stop crime.
Yes, ma'am.
But let's please not open the door for them. And you have someone there at the municipal center working through the day, don't you, or, or a worker in the general area, and the last thing he can do is lock the gate when he leaves.
Well, with the parks, all the signs say, "No parking after dark," and now it gets dark at nine o'clock, and that person goes home. Our summer schedule is 2:30 because we, all, all public works, the 90-plus percent of public works, it's too hot to work at 3:00 o'clock and 4:00 o'clock because it's 100 degrees some days. So in the spring, we go to a summer schedule, and we're on that schedule now, so 2:30, everyone's gone relating to that. They start at 6:00, mowing, picking up stuff and doing repairs and doing those, those things, and no one is there available at the municipal center after 2:30 for sure, and that, that, no one stakes out there and has a job inside the municipal center. Is that correct, Ms. Goldman?
That is correct.
So they're all over the place, and cemeteries and, um, and parks, and they're not sitting there, we don't have anybody at the municipal center, uh, available to do that. Everyone is in that team effort to clean up the city and do those things.
Okay, what you're saying then is, no, you will not lock the park.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying we're studying it and we want to make an informed decision, that's all I'm saying, and it's, with all due respect, we don't have all of the factors, we are, my preference is to, because, uh, Councilman Green would like to have, uh, is that true, Councilman Green, didn't you mention something like that about your parks in your district?
About what?
About if one's locked, then we should afford, you make some statement like that. Mr. Green has Raph George Park.
No, it's Mr. Prater.
Mr. Prater. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, not Raph George, I'm talking about the one, Jackson Street.
Jackson, E. Nelson as well.
Griffin, and they have buildings in them also, and if we do it for one, then other citizens have as much right to ask, make the same request.
Here's the difference, Mike.
Okay, what's the difference?
She's asking for it, she didn't, she's not waiting on somebody else.
I understand that, and look.
What I'm saying is, why can't we go ahead and put some priority on it and stop this vandalism and other things that's been going on over there?
Yes.
I would have asked for it if I knew it could be asked, but I didn't think you can lock up a park.
Well, if you want to go through the expense of adding the gates and making all the repairs and locking and having a person to come out and lock it, it's still not going to stop the vandalism as surveillance will, so we would.
Oh, I'm not against the cameras, I'm not against them, if we can figure out where we're going to pay, pay for them.
Yeah, and, and so you're saying you would approve the additional budget expense, you would vote for it?
I'm saying, I want to do something to expedite where we're not coming back every month and talking about the same subject.
Yeah.
Let's try.
This, I was here two months ago.
Yes, ma'am.
You've had two months and I'm back, and you say you need more time.
Well, I'm not convinced that, that locking the park, that park, when we have Dodson Park, and the next week, the Dodson people might be up here and saying, "I want you to build a fence around Dodson," or "I want you to build a fence around Raph George, I want you to build a fence in my neighborhood."
My, my deal is, with Keep More House Beautiful, we invested a lot of time and a lot of money in Carter Park.
And that's appreciated.
And, and we have seen our work that we have done vandalized. Y'all claim, okay, nothing's happened this year, so we'll slide on through. I say, let's don't wait for any more vandalism. I realize a gate locked will not stop it totally.
Yes, ma'am.
But let's do not have the door wide open and invite them in. Make them work to get into Carter Park. Make them climb a fence, make them crawl under a barrier, but let's leave, let's lock the door.
Well, that's going to be a decision for the council, and we will take it under advisement, and we can, uh, if one of the councilmen wants to sponsor that, then the other council will have a, have a shot at it. Now, I have, uh, talked with Ms. Goldman, and we have in the budget enough money to purchase a couple of these cameras, and, uh...
Why aren't we doing it?
Yeah, well, I, I've already got the call in to get the, uh, get it done, and because, and I'm, at our municipal center, it's dark down the street. When we have an event at the municipal center, people park, they're available parking, and then they park down Mola Street from the municipal center, all, almost all the way down to, to, uh, to the apartments, two-thirds of the way down. There's not enough lighting, and there's no cameras out there. And if you want to deter crime?
Right.
Give the threat that you've got a high-definition HD camera that can read a license plate up to 300 yards, and, yes, ma'am, Ms. Ms. Carpenter, you can come up. Mr. Floyd, can you train the camera?
Can y'all hear me? Okay. I just want to point out that KMV spent a lot of money at Carter Park. In addition, they put two surveillance cameras at East Madison Park. Are y'all using them?
I was unaware, oh, well, those surveillance cameras at, 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 uh, East Madison, does the police department have the codes and access to the video?
Yes, they do.
Uh, Chief, uh, Chief would have to answer that, because the city, our departments does not have, uh, Mr. Floyd?
No, we don't have direct access, we come after the buck.
If there's, if there is a, if there is an event, as I understand it, and they are close to the Council on Agent, right?
Yeah, it's housed in the Council.
Right, housed in the Council on Agent building. Uh, it's not, is it a cloud storage? It's not cloud storage, it's, it's storage inside the camera, and if there's an event where someone breaks in, Mr. Floyd, our technology company, goes out and he gets the, he gets, yes, he gets the, the chip, uh, the, uh, the SIM card, and he plugs it in his computer and he looks at the video.
He configured the, the two cameras.
Yes, ma'am, but that's...
He knows.
What year was that?
Two years ago, wasn't it, about two?
Maybe three, four, somewhere around there.
Well, these are cloud stor-
One was, one was focused on Dr. Russell's office because there was trouble in there.
Get my phone out, off the desk, in the conference room.
And then also, there was one focused on one of the Doug houses, because they had been troubled, you know, in recent months over that, so we did that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know, uh, you know, what happened after that, but I just wanted to point it out, not only do you have to have them, you have to use them. And also, lighting is very helpful, and we put in lights over the tennis courts, over the little girls' field, and ever, and other places as well. So it, the surveillance camera is wonderful, and we put the signs up, this area is under survei-
Yes, ma'am.
And I agree with you, I support everything you're saying about.
Yes, ma'am.
They do deter, just the signage, the thought of it's something, I mean, you know, showing that there was surveillance cameras, I agree totally, that's supportive, but, uh...
Yes, ma'am. Well, the, these would, these would, uh, and I know we're spending a lot of time here and we're going to do that, but this is, uh, this is, uh, I can look at cameras, uh, at a remote location right here, all the activity, anybody who would, motion in this place that I'm monitoring is right there, that's a live, that's a live video. If it's motion, it alerts us. If it's motion on those, it doesn't alert anyone, except you know that the, the bedding cage, you know, was damaged last night and someone stole something, and then, then you call, but this alerts, and this system will alert us of any motion, and we're going to use, you know, the technology, and there's the live video of that, of that place, and I can monitor any of the many cameras, you know, and, and Public Works, Police, uh, so give us a chance to solve the problem and see if you're satisfied with the solution.
May I make a suggestion?
You can.
Would you appoint Mr. Isaac Ray as well as others that work with the city to make several, come up with several plans and make a proposal, instead of, uh, waiting until we can get a grant for the surveillance cameras, because, can you make a, can you, can you study it a little bit and see what's available?
Yes, ma'am, we will do that, but we have already done that, I've asked Chief, Chief Campbell, we met with the surveillance companies, I had him list 16 locations in Bastrop, and then we can move these cameras around. We are in the Internet of Things, we are in the, uh, we, we are going to buy on our own a couple of cameras, I believe, I talk with Ms. Goldman all the time, begging for some money, and we actually have some money that we can allocate to that in this year's budget. So I wanted to wait until close to the end of the budget year, we're in the last month, before doing these items, because I didn't want to take the city over budget. So it's been a priority. Okay, but it's been a priority, and give us a chance to do that, we're not ignoring you, we want the same thing. Our goal, Ms. Peppers, is the same goal that you have, to, we appreciate all that you have done and all that you continue to do, keep, keep more house beautiful. I don't know what the city would be like without keep more house beautiful, and the projects like the, the fire project and the, the fire station and the bathroom we were going to repair at, at the, uh, airport, we were going to hire a guy to do that, and we have volunteers to chip in and cover the expense, I was at the airport today, uh, and, and, uh, and all of that, but you guys do a wonderful job and you're great partners, and we want to keep that partnership strong.
Well, on the table, I want locking it as well as maybe a combination of surveillance cameras and locking it, maybe that would be the answer.
Well, it's, it's going to strain our budget.
At any rate, I, if you don't want to, if you don't want to study, you know...
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, it's going to strain our budget if we allocate someone, and then that person goes on vacation, we've got to find someone to do it. We can automate the process through a database and say, "These are the people who are going to lock it," but it's going to cost us, we, Ms. Goldman, with the lowest price, minimum wage, you figured that on minimum wage, didn't you, Ms. Goldman?
It's more than minimum wage.
But it's our lowest pay, but it's within a dollar probably, isn't it? Within a dollar minimum wage?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, within a dollar minimum wage. $10,000, I know it's going to cost us at least $10,000 a year to do that one park.
How do other parks do it in other cities? Do they lock their parks?
Uh, no, ma'am. Uh, 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 my favorite park in Jackson, Mississippi is, is, uh, Palm Bridges, it's a walking tr- park. It's open till 10:30 at night, but people walk all night long. Uh, you can look on, look on the web, they don't have gates and chains and that kind of stuff. Most parks do not have gates and chains.
I'm gone, ask one more question and I'm going to sit down, I won't take any more of your time.
Yes, ma'am.
Sometimes the cost of repairing vandalism outweighs the cost of overtime.
Yes ma'am, I, I, I agree with that. You know, but 10 years of overtime, $70,000, or $100,000 in 10 years.
I just know, I've been to the park, month after month, and when I see the damage is done, it breaks my heart.
Yes ma'am.
And I'm thinking, we've got the doors open, and we let 'em in?
We share that with you. It breaks our heart to see what they did last year. But we caught the individuals who, who did that, and, and, uh, and they're not doing it again this year. So, um, we're, we're with you, we're on your, we're on the same side. But, but, but let us stay within budget and try to do that, and then, and see if Mr. Green's gonna demand that, uh, that, uh, Jackson Street Park is done, and Mr. Prater might have some hopes to.
Well, in the meantime, I'm gonna make some phone calls and see how Washito Parish does.
Yes ma'am.
If they lock 'em, and if they don't lock 'em, it'd be good.
And what Karoli and the rest.
One thing we might wanna consider is, let policemen go by and lock 'em up. And, uh, they'll be surveilling the area too, but I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, we talked about, we talked about that. We did talk about the police going, adding that to the police.
I hate to bring it up here, but I'm going to. One of the, two of the problems we have is we are finding used condoms in the bathrooms. We are finding used needles in the dugout. So we have got, uh, problems.
Yeah, and that's why we're doing, that's why we're doing high-tech cameras, because we wanna catch 'em. And we want people to know that if you do this in the park, you're gonna get caught, 'cause we have motion detection. But thank you so much, and we are going to, go ahead.
Can you give us a cost per camera?
Can you come up, the, the one-time cost? They're, they vary from, from $4,000 to $6,000 to $8,000, depending on how used. That's a, but it's a one-time cost.
Per camera?
Per camera.
Oh, they are, they are state-of-the-art, cloud-based and everything. The ones that we want, yes ma'am, they are costly, but they are a solution. They are watching 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 a year. And, 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 and they're cheaper, that's why they use them in New Orleans and, and other places around the country.
How much do we have to put forward, how, which is the mon, how much money does the city of Bastrop have to put?
The grant that I'm looking at?
And what percentage do, you know, you can't get a grant to pay you?
The, the grant that I'm looking at, there is no match, the one that I'm looking at. I don't know whether we're gonna get it, but I'm, I'm, we found a patch, a bu, a patch, a little pocket of money that's a private source that has an interest in Bastrop. And they have indicated that they, what, but I don't wanna announce that it's gone, and people say, oh, you said we gonna have this covered. I'm not saying it, but we're seeking it. There's a, there's something that I can't talk about that I hope is in Act Two for the city of Bastrop, but I'm not gonna announce it, because it might not happen.
The grant hasn't been applied for at this point.
No ma'am, but we're talking to the people. We're talking to the people, and we're trying to get closer and closer there.
Asking the councilman, don't let him, you know, put it on the back burner.
Thank you. Thank you so much, thank you so much, thank you, Ms. Pepper. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Pat.
Okay. Uh, number nine, Mr. Ricky Allen Anderson, would you please come up, Mr. Anderson? How are you doing today, sir?
I'm doing lovely.
Great, great, thank you.
I don't know where to begin, but I got to begin somewhere.
Well, your item states two, two things.
Well, I, I, I just start, 'cause I'm not gonna take two of y'all important time.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, based upon information, uh, it did say it's a lot of aggravation and speculation in this community.
Yes.
Pretending to, what's on my agenda, what I'm about to talk about. Now, I just.
Wait, I'm gonna repeat that, I didn't get, based on?
Based upon what, on the agenda of what I'm about to talk about.
Yes sir, yes sir.
With that said, one question, the officer that mistreated Mr. Bobby Thompson, has he been fired?
Uh, Chief, would you come up, please? Assistant Chief, who is, uh, who is, uh, acting as chief in the absence of our chief for an extended period of time is, um, uh, Mr. Anthony Evans. And, uh, Chief, what is the, you mentioned Mr. Thompson, Mr. Bobby Thompson. Of course, we.
We have an open investigation on that incident, but we are a civil service department. You just don't fire someone overnight, it's a process.
Yes.
I can't comment too much on it, 'cause it's still open.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Anderson, you have experience in law enforcement.
Yes, I do.
And you know what civil service.
Yeah, I understand that procedure.
Yes, and you know.
I'm just asking a particular question.
Yes, but, I'm saying, but, you know, there's misinformation out there, look, and I'm not.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
I just wanna ask two questions, I'm, I'm gonna be on my way.
Yeah.
And, and he has answered one of it.
Okay, go ahead.
But based upon that.
Yeah.
I move tonight to fire him.
We can't.
Just, just listen to me.
Yes.
I just made a motion, I ain't got no authorization to do it.
Right.
But I'm gonna make a move that you fire him, and if somebody in the citizen from the community would second that, I'd be more than happy, if not.
Even if that's against the law?
Well, I don't care what it is, it's on the record.
Well, we, we, we swore.
I just, I just made that statement, I'm gonna move on, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
He's fired, for some concern.
Well, we appreciate your comment.
Those two officers who are allegedly supposed to have been involved with the shooting are Mr. Johnson.
Chief, will you come back, please?
Has he been fired, or have they been fired?
Chief of the Civil Service?
Yes, sir, again, this is a civil service department, it's governed by civil service rules, and you don't just fire someone without their due process of the investigation. The investigation is still ongoing and is not complete.
Who's conducting that investigation?
Oh, the officer involved in the shooting is the state police.
He has answered my question, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
With that said, I move tonight that you fire both of them.
Okay.
Not for cause of no state police report, because they have possibly violated what policy given by the Bastrop Police Department. And proper proceedings on a felony stop. I'm gonna leave it alone.
Yes, sir.
And with that said, you know why there's a lot of aggravation and speculation? 'Cause not one citizen in here that sits up here and says, "Call this up, lead us," comes and tries to calm us down. Not one, ain't nobody said nothing. You ask mayor, you didn't come up and tell the government, nothing. You didn't say citizen, it's under investigation by Louisiana State Police. Let 'em handle it. We're letting them handle it. We have been quiet. You notice, the Thompson family is not here, the Johnson family is not here, but their spirit is here. And with that said, Mr. Howard Locke, Mr. Diddy Green, Mr. Robert Shaw, Mr. Larry Prater, don't take it personal. By the power best in me from my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, all y'all are fired. Y'all have a nice evening.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Yes, Mr. Mr. You wanted to, I promised you the opportunity to come, because I didn't wanna get ahead of the agenda item. Go ahead, Mr. Brede.
I, I just had a question, uh, to Assistant Chief. Do you have a roundup, do you have a roundabout time, where they at, the state police on, on the Johnson case? I know the Thompson case is really fresh, maybe it ain't a week old, but where are we, or can you give us some kinda idea where we are on the investigation, have you?
No, so we, we are in touch with them almost on a daily basis.
Right.
But they're still in their process.
Okay.
Uh, they seemed like, we, when we call them so often, that we're trying to hurry them, and they explained it to us that it's just not done overnight. This is a very serious matter, involves taking someone's life, and they're just not gonna hurt, uh, muddle through it. They're gonna do a thorough process, so it might take a little while.
Okay, but the officer that, that, that took the action, he's still under leave, leave with pay, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Administrative leave.
Thank you, that, that's, thank you.
Yes, which is the proper practice.
I got a question, who's doing the investigation on the Thompson incident?
That's an internal investigation, and I do the internal investigations.
And we initiated that investigation immediately, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Chief, yes.
The day after it happened, the investigation was, uh, started.
Yeah.
Do we have a timeframe on that?
Well, the process of a civil service is, the officer that's involved in it, once he's notified that there's an investigation, he has 30 days which to get a lawyer or a representative before he's interviewed. He doesn't have to wait those 30 days if he doesn't want his lawyer or representative. And we can do the, uh, interview before the 30 days. But if he wants one, which this one wants to have a representative at least, it'll be 30 days before I'm able to interview it.
And that's civil service law, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The investigation has to be completed within 60 days.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Ten, item ten, Resolution 19-1834, resolution commending Darrell Barner, Rat, uh, upon retirement with the Bastrop Public Works, Mr. Isaac Gray. Is Mr. Gray here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Darrell has been with us, I, for, I guess around 30 years, I, I assume. He retired last, uh, May 31st. He's, uh, did a good job while he was here, at least while I was here, 'cause he's been much longer than I have, and we just wanna commend him for the job he, he did for the city.
Yes, uh, he was loyal, and most people know him as Rat. That's a nickname that stuck with him for a long time. And we do, uh, honor his service to the city of Bastrop, and we're presenting him with the resolution, gentlemen. Uh, noting his great service to the citizens of the city of Bastrop. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Item 11, resolution.
Are we supposed to approve it?
Oh, yes, on that, on that, I'm sorry. You moved? It's been moved by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Councilman Green, that we recognize, formally recognize, um, Res- Resolution 19-1834, a resolution commending Darrell Barner upon retirement with the city of Bastrop Public Works Department. Been moved and seconded, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Resolution 19-1835, a resolution of the mayor and board of aldermen for the city of Bastrop, losing to make application through the US Department of Justice for funding through the JAG program to fund for portable radios for the Bastrop Police Department. Assistant Chief Evans, Chief Evans, item number 11, the resolution for funding, uh, through JAG for the radios.
Yes, sir, that's a JAG grant, it's a grant that we split with the Sheriff's Department. I think it's, uh, $10,600, so ours will be $5,150. Uh, we're gonna buy radios with it. The radios we have are over nine years old, they're discontinued. Uh, they still service them, but they're starting to run out of parts to fix them. And that's what we're gonna use that, uh, grant money for.
How many would I get us?
Oh, they're probably about, I don't have that listed in front of me, but they're usually about $1,000 each, $1,200 each.
So we can get at least five of them?
Yes, sir. The last time we got this grant, we didn't buy radios, we bought batteries for the radios that we had.
Gentlemen?
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt Resolution 19-835 for the radios.
I second it.
Been moved by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Councilman Locke, that we adopt Resolution 19-1835, a resolution, uh, to, uh, make application through the Department of Justice JAG program. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it, uh, the resolution is adopted. Twelve. Resolution 19-1836, a resolution, um, sorry, residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan under Section 104D of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, this is for our sewer grant, for the Brandle Street, the $9,000.
Yes.
$691,010. This is just part of the process, um, that they require the community development, and this, y'all got a copy of it? It's saying what housing and the stipulations that we'll have on that. Even though we do have sewer, they require us to do this on here, uh, and it meets their guidelines. So we're just asking y'all to adopt this. Matter of fact, I think a couple of years, we adopted the same thing, but they wanted it to be current.
Yes.
Well, this is a sewer.
Yes, sir, it's the sewer grant that we got to fix the Brandle, uh, it's in, uh, Mr. Shaw.
This does have, have nothing to do with housing?
Housing, no serving, doesn't.
Well, it's a lot.
Housing's federal money, and they're part of us to do this.
To comply.
Mandate.
Yes, sir.
If you, if you. If you, if you, if you read the details, isn't that what I've had time to do? It sure looks like it's housing.
Right, it does have to do with it, but what we're doing with the money has nothing to do with housing, it's a big sewer issue. But to do that.
You have to comply.
They require us to do that.
Yes, sir, I move that we adopt Resolution 19-1836.
It's been moved by Councilman Locke.
I'm seconding it.
Seconded by Councilman Shaw, that we adopt this resolution, uh, 19-1836. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it, the resolution is adopted. Resolution, item 13, Resolution 19-1837, a resolution authorizing city of Bastrop through its mayor to enter into a corporate endeavor agreement, CEA, with the Morehouse Parish School Board to lease a portable metal building for, uh, use at the Bastrop Prior Training Ground. Captain Timothy Williams, are you here, sir?
Yes, sir.
Greetings, Captain Williams, how you doing?
Good.
Uh, just for the record, how are things going at the tra, uh, at the?
Training ground.
Training ground.
Good, we're trying to finish up. We got the, uh, tower completed, and got the driveway completed, so the next step is to get this building out there, uh, where we can hold our training classes in the building without having to go to Central Station, then drive out there and actually do the training. Uh, it'll also, uh, give us a bathroom, full bathroom and a shower. Hopefully, I don't need a shower out there, but you never know, somebody may not get too hot or something and need to get in and cool down. But it'll be full facilities out there.
Yes. And the school boards, um, what is the lease cost to us?
I believe it's gonna be like $1 for 100 years or something like that, it's basically free, but.
Yes, as you know, school, the school si, board closed several schools, and they have an excess of portable buildings, very nice ones. And they are working with us as we work with them. We've done, uh, some things for them, like, uh, Phase One of Southside, correct, that they have at the sale, is that right? And, uh, we're working together with the school board, and we wanna commend the school board for, for their cooperation and, and this intergovernmental, uh, relationship that we are continuing to develop. Um, what's your recommendation?
I recommend that y'all move to make a motion to adopt it.
Yeah, this is one of those portable buildings, we're gonna have to get it, and we're gonna have to move it, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
You say it's just a lease for $1?
I believe that's what the term's gonna be, it's not, yeah, it's not more than, it's like a dollar for 100 years or 50 years or something like that, it's.
It's nominal.
Mr. Shaw, a couple of years ago, we got one of those buildings from them to put at the animal shelter. I don't know what the range is, this one, but we paid a dollar for 99 years straight here.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's before 99, not a hundred.
Okay. I move that we, I guess what we had, purchase, I guess you'd say, purchase from.
Or lease.
Lease, not buy, lease.
I'm sorry, lease.
Okay. Been moved by Councilman Shaw, that we leased the building, as described in this res- Been moved by Councilman Shaw, that we leased the building, as described in this resolution. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Green. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The resolution is adopted. Resolution, uh, item fourteen, Resolution nineteen dash eighteen thirty-eight, a resolution of the mayor and board of aldermen for the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Brown and Brown of Louisiana for providing of, for risk management services and for the fiscal year, um, of nineteen twenty, which starts, which starts July one. Mr. Caro, would you please come?
Name's John Caro with Brown and Brown Insurance, and, uh, we're happy to provide your risk management services, general liability, auto liability, and workers' comp coverages in addition to, um, your, your public officials liability, uh, as well. And this year, uh, you know, over the years since we've, uh, been handling the city of Bastrop's account, uh, we've done a great job, and as this, as has the city of Bastrop, with claims, and keeping our claims and liabilities to a minimum. And this year is the first year that, uh, we've actually had other carriers in the marketplace that were willing to come to the table with quotes, other than the original carrier that we went with, Travelers. Travelers rights are our liabilities and our workers' comp. Uh, my recommendation this year is to stay with Travelers, because we still have work that needs to be done, but with the, with the quotes that we were receiving from other carriers this year, it just doesn't make fiscal sense to go ahead and make these moves, because overall, that's about, those, this option is about fifty thousand dollars more expensive than what Travelers is bringing to the table. Um, but next year, if we keep those claims and we keep the, you know, we keep the trajectory going that we're going, these other options are gonna become more and more enticing, and, and, and those windows and doors will continue to stay open for us. The one good thing I will say this year is that, on the liability side, we've had half million dollar limits. We've had a half a million dollar per occurrence and a half a million dollar aggregate, just the total limit. This year, for an additional three hundred and twelve dollars, Travelers is offering to go with that half a million dollar limit per occurrence, but a million dollar aggregate, so it gives us another half a million dollars of coverage, should we need it. For three hundred dollars, I, I think that's a no-brainer. Um, we have, we have a, we have a large decrease in our liability insurance, we have a little bit of an increase in our auto liability, and that's mainly because we added seven vehicles, we added some big fire trucks, uh, and we added comprehensive and collision coverage to several police vehicles and to other vehicles that we've had over the year. Overall, we have a twenty-one thousand dollar increase over last year's premium. The majority of that, matter of fact, all of that is attributable to that auto increase, um, but that's justified by the vehicles that we added and, and, and the, and the other coverages that we added. So my recommendation for this year is to stay with Travelers, we have a lot of work to do, and I'm gonna be working with the administration and Mike Eadie, the risk manager for Travelers, to, um, keep moving in a positive direction.
Gentlemen?
May I move that we accept the Resolution nineteen eighteen thirty-nine?
Been moved by Finance Committee Chair Locke, second by Councilman Shaw, that we adopt this resolution. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The resolution carries. Thank you so much, John.
Appreciate y'all, thank you very much.
Great. Item fifteen, Resolution nineteen dash eighteen thirty-nine, a resolution of the mayor and board of aldermen for the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, the city, to authorize the city to enter into an intergovernmental agency agreement with the Bastrop Fire Protection District Number Two. Mr. Boyd, the Fire Protection District Number Two is also having their meeting right now. It's scheduled at the same time as our city council meeting. Uh, Chief Williams, can you come up, please, for a second? As you know, Fire, Fire Protection District Number Two was the brainchild of some very and very outstanding, um, persons, uh, back several years ago in the latter part of the last century. And the, the, uh, idea was to offer protection, better protection of, of people just outside the city limits of Bastrop, uh, so that they would have better fire protection and reduce their insurance rates. So the original, uh, proposal, I know Mr. Vetch and some others and myself was on a committee to, to get this done, to establish the fire district, and we charged, I believe, fifty dollars per portable, like a trailer, or, not a trailer, mobile home, or what's the manufactured home? Is the term now, and seventy-five dollars for a structure, a house. And that would, uh, have people, they had to pay that if, if, if the voters, so they took it to the voters, and they established Fire District Number Two. And the, the Fire District Number Two has a contract with the city of Bastrop, right, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, sir.
And we had, had two additional stations, I believe, uh, which is on one thirty-nine, four twenty-five, south one, and one's up-
Obanita Road.
Obanita Road, yeah, close to, uh, Pine Grove?
Yes, Bass, Pine Grove.
In, in that area. And it's been good for the citizens, and they also share cost and cover their full cost of, uh, operating those two. And it gives us a lot more flexibility, I believe, and, uh, it's a two-way street there.
It is, we, we work with each other, I mean, as far as the rating, they benefit off of us and we benefit off of them, because we get credit for their trucks running inside the city and the manpower and vice versa.
Yes. So we have that additional manpower both ways.
Yes.
And also, they help us, in addition to covering the cost, I, I believe that there are twelve of our, almost forty, is it forty?
We have forty, yes, we budget for forty, and yes, they, they account for twelve.
They count for twelve. And that is about thirty percent of our, of our workforce is Fire District Number Two and our fire department. Uh, as an example of how well they work with us when we were doing our, when we dedicated our two-acre training ground, because our training ground by H.B. Adams has not been operating for years, is that correct?
Correct, yes, since, I think I was the last one to come through an academy out there, and that's over nineteen years ago.
Yes. And, uh, in order to, uh, to make the people to have a training facility where people can actually get skills, develop skills, um, that helps with our fire rating also.
Absolutely.
So it helps keep people safe, and it helps with our fire rating. Uh, as an example, when we did the two acres we dedicated in twenty seventeen in October, we, uh, have done several structures out there. We did the burn building, which we got those containers, cut them and created an environment. You've got a car out there with propane that you set on fire for practice and knock with automobiles. You've got the Christmas tree and that kind of apparatus.
It's another LPG.
You got your pad, and LSU comes in and helps. Uh, the city covered basically all of that, except now, when we got to build the tower.
Correct. The District Two funded all the money for the tower that we just got built.
What was that amount?
Seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Yes, that did not come out of our general fund.
Correct.
Yes. Uh, so gentlemen, this resolution is, Mr. Goldman, how often do we approve this?
It's done every two years.
Okay, and this is the second year, correct? So we need to do it in order to keep this agreement in effect. Any questions for Mr., uh, Chief Williams? Gentlemen? Resolution, uh, nineteen dash eighteen thirty-nine, and we don't anticipate any changes. We've discussed, uh, different things with, uh, with the district. Mr. Boyd and I have had extensive discussions on some things, and, uh, and my recommendation is that we don't change anything this, 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 for this, uh, next two years, that we adopt the same plan that we've had with them. Uh, so gentlemen, it's your, uh, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution nineteen dash eighteen thirty-nine.
Been moved by Councilman Shaw?
Second.
Second by Councilman Locke, that we adopt this, adopt this resolution. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The resolution carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance nineteen dash forty-two fifty-two, an ordinance granting water treatment and control company doing business as People's Water Service Company of Bastrop, the franchise rights and privileges for a period of fifteen years from the date of the adoption thereof to supply in such manner as it deems best, as it deems best, water service throughout the city of Bastrop, Louisiana. Mr. Nelson, would you come, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Greetings.
You all know me, I'm Doyle Nelson, manager of People's Water Service. We're here seeking to renew our franchise that expired, uh, back in February of eighteen. Uh, Peoples has been here about seventy-seven years and served Bastrop well, in my opinion. Um, I would, uh, like to point out some of the, the things that we've done. In the last five years, we've averaged, uh, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year in new capital investment improvement in the system. Uh, right now, I have a contract for thirty-one thousand dollars on my desk, waiting to, uh, make improvements to the ground storage tank at our Ogden plant. We've already invested this year, thirty-six thousand dollars in, um, variable speed drives at our plants, in, in anticipation of putting in, uh, over a million dollars worth of backup generators, uh, we, we, that's what we went to the commission with, and that's what they have approved. Our engineer in Lafayette, uh, Domain Zabon Associates, has the plans to, where we can put in a one-point-seven million dollar filter at Ogden Street, iron and manganese removal. Uh, the plans are, are there, and they're pretty much ready to go, I believe. We're just, we're hoping that we go out and forbid, we're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars on Martin Luther King South to move our water main out of the way for the bridge that the city's getting improved, widened and renewed.
While you're there, Mr. Nelson, uh, can you help us with something? Because many people, uh, there's all kind of rumor and conjecture about the Martin Luther King Street Bridge, why haven't you finished it? You finished other bridges before you finished this bridge. Uh, the new bridge, we're building a probably one-point-four million dollar bridge there. And the process is, is that the city, of course, we, this bridge was coming out from under the federal off-highway bridge program, uh, in twenty eighteen, and this council, through its wisdom, and Mr. Locke, I remember said, that it was a no-brainer that we spend the money to have the bridge re-engineered, is that correct, Mr. Locke?
Correct.
And we spent, I believe, about a hundred thousand dollars to do that, to, to get a one-point-four million dollar bridge. And there are steps that you take that are in stone to get this federal funding through the state of Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development. Um, the first step was to have the bridge re-engineered, because our plans was in metric, and we needed them in the English, so we had to have those plans that were done in two thousand and six redone. And that's what this council voted to do. And then we had to, uh, have the plans done, they had to be approved by the state, which took several months. Then, after that, the, we had a plan-in-hand meeting, which you attended, Mr. Nelson, uh, and we had all the utilities there that had to be moved, electric, energy has to move their power lines, you have to move your water, you're gonna move your water lines, that's gonna cost you about fifty grand, right?
About fifty thousand, yes, I was going-
And other utilities have to move their service also, AT&T, I believe, has a line, and, uh, some sewer things gotta be done. Um, and right now, well, after the plan-in-hand meeting on July sixth of twenty eighteen, uh, we had to petition the Corps of Engineers to do an environmental study, it took them several months, we got the clearance on that in March of this year. Of course, they closed, the state closed the bridge in early December, late November, uh, of twenty eighteen, because it did not meet the, uh, couldn't pass inspection, timber's rotten and that kind of stuff. Um, and now, after the, uh, state, after the, we got the environmental results from the U.S. Cor- United States Corps of Engineers, we entered the acquisition of the property, and we could not do anything to acquire property before we got a certified appraiser to go. The city couldn't just go and say, hey, we got adjudicated property, we'll swap you this, swap you that, and make a deal. This has to be a process that's, that's, uh, that's very regulated, and if you make one mistake, they could pull the project. So that's taking time, and you can't do your fifty thousand dollars worth until we acquire all six pieces of property.
Yes.
And then there's some problems with, with one of those pieces of property, we had to wait and do some things. So I just wanted to use this opportunity to let the public know that the bridge is moving, and that it's costing a lot of money. Uh, I know you have a question, we don't, you have a question? Yes, ma'am.
I don't know what bridge you're talking about.
Martin Luther King Bridge.
How, how, how can a person, um, keep that bridge like it is, 'cause it's quiet?
This, the bridge, that's a great question, the bridge is quiet, and I'm just taking-
Uh, what's the number I can call? 'Cause it's quiet over there.
Oh, you're talking about no traffic?
It's, yeah. It's quiet.
Yes, ma'am. That's, I'm sorry, that's not part. Yes, ma'am.
You know, it's real fast.
I'm sorry, I allowed that, because maybe I should not have allowed the question, but I allowed it. Thank you for your comment, and I'm sure the board here will take that under consideration.
What's the number I can call that's building, that's building-
It's too late, it's, it's, it's too late. Yeah, Mr. Pierre just gave it to him, he's the man, yeah. But that's a great, that's a great observation. Go ahead, Doyle.
Uh, I just want to point out that, uh, Peoples is a, a good, uh, corporate, um, sponsor on things, we, we back a lot of these volunteer things that, uh, keep the square looking good and help with the city. Um, uh, we work with, with all the departments of the city. This week, we came up with, and helped, uh, Ms. Goldman, they, y'all had to get some additional information together for, to, for your grant, that six hundred thousand dollar grant, Louisiana Rural Water has to verify it for, uh, Rural Water has to verify that your, uh, uh, rate structure will support, you know, ongoing with your sewer, and they needed some additional, uh, information, so, you know, we're working with Ms. Goldman and, uh, working with the fire department on what they're doing to try to improve your fire rating. And, uh, a little over, it's been over a year ago, um, that the, there was the Utilities Commission that was, uh, you appointed and, and the council members appointed people, and we, uh, the company met with them, we gave them the, the, the tour of the facilities via PowerPoint, uh, they didn't choose to attend, they would've been welcome to, to go out to the plant. But, um, down in the final statement, uh, uh, the, uh, the chairman, Mr. Patrick, he, he got injured the day he was supposed to present it to the council, and wasn't able to, but he did send it via email, you know, in a PDF file, and, uh, one of his final statements was that, uh, he strongly man, uh, excuse me, strongly recommended that the franchise for Peoples be finalized for a period of fifteen years. And, you know, this is, it's, it's, it's been going on for a long time, and I'd, I'd like to see us go ahead and get this resolved and move on down the road. We're talking about, you know, I talked about three million dollars more investment here, and, uh, you can't do it if you can't have confidence that you're gonna be here, I mean, it-
Well, will you, with your, we're gonna, in, any questions that the council has, I have some concerns, as we, you and I have talked, talked about, right?
Yes, you were worried about improvements, but I haven't had any complaints from the city about any of the repairs that we've made, so I, I, you know-
Well, we changed processes, particularly, where I could take you and show you some cuts in the pavement that doesn't meet our new standards for asphalt repairs. Uh, I mean, it's, it's several things, and I have concerns, because we are fiduciaries, uh, for the city of Bastrop, and we have to think long-term as well as short-term. And, and, uh, every one of the, you know, and we're not here to discuss this tonight, but, um, I'm gonna give my concerns to Mr. Pierre to communicate to, to, to the company, and, uh, any councilman can also do- councilman can also do that, but I have some concerns because we, you know, water, water is vital, and, and-
Well, one thing, Mayor, we, with Peoples, they have a good track record.
Yes.
They've got good quality water.
Yes.
They don't have balls. We've got to take into account all those different things.
Yes, sir, I do, Mr. Shaw, and with all due respect, I, I know that the pipes, 212 miles of pipe, are almost 100 years old. And Donaldsonville, as an example, got a grant, they bought the water system from Peoples, and they are spending $18 million, and 8 million of that was a grant because they were not a private company. And I have reservations, they're replacing all the water meters with high-tech meters, they're replacing a lot of mains, and they're going to continue to get grants to supplement, and every time a private company get, spend money, they petition the Public Service Commission, as Mr. Nelson talked about, petition the commission. Well, that's the Public Service Commission, and they say we want our money back, and it's in the form of a rate increase.
So is that the franchise fee that you own the bill?
No, the franchise fee is a fee that we charge, we impose a franchise fee, but I have my bill right here. Mr. Doyle, know that I come up and see him every month.
I'm in, I'm in a month today. I'm in a month today.
This is current, the white one's current, okay? The yellow ones are the ones that they're about to cut you off.
It's current, I can guarantee you, it's current.
But on the bill, because I just visited, Mr. Nelson, I go up and pay mine personally because I like the fellowship, but I see City of Bastrop franchise fee on this one is 44 cents, and the City of Bastrop franchise fee on this one is $1.10. We passed that franchise fee on to the people. It's passed through, it's a pass-through, so whatever, we could jack up the franchise fee, and all we'd be doing is getting more money out of the people. So, you know, the franchise fee is not what it sounds like. But I have concerns, and I, I'm open with those, and I'm not just trying to tell you what you might want to hear, but I have some serious concerns. City of Ruston, City of Ruston replaced all their meters with high-tech meters. If I took a trip to Houston and my water line broke because of a freeze, and I run 50,000 gallons before I get home, I won't know it. Well, people in these other areas that's doing these upgrades, Mr. Nelson, they smart meters know it and can tell them, hey, you know, they can shut down, they can do stuff. And it's, it's infrastructure that I worry about with any private company. And then the next day, you could enter into a sales agreement and sell it. The next day after we do this, because a water system that's got a 15-year license is, is sellable, and we know, I've seen water companies sell, and I know that our cable company sold to a company in France, and the next time I went up there, there were three less people and less, less, less people to come and service your equipment because they have to pay back the, the debt service from the purchase price. So all of those things concern me as mayor because I work for the people of the City of Bastrop, and I have concerns that I think are legitimate. But if none of the councilmen have those concerns-
I think Mr. Pratt, Mr. Pratt, you want to make a comment?
You wanted to make a comment, and we promised you, but let me, let me finish with Mr. Nelson. Yes, Doyle, we will hastily do this, and you know, I talked to you about this, I ran a linear, linear regression on the population statistics from the, from the census. If the City of Bastrop drops below 10,000 people right now, the projection was 10,278 for last year, I track this all the time. And because of our school situation, we've lost population with people moving because of schools and other things, and we're losing people because of mortality. And if we're under 10,000 people, it puts us in a whole different grant type of thing. And, and, and I would be remiss if I didn't bring these things up, you know? And then 15 years from now, if we hadn't done the right kind of infrastructure with our pipes being over 100 years old, 212 miles of them that stretch from, that could stretch from here to Longview, Texas, then there's nothing wrong with having the discussion and raising the questions to satisfy, to satisfy people who, you know, they don't want to become public because they don't want to be ostracized. So there are people who tell me things and say, I'm concerned about this, I'm concerned about that, and I just bring them up, you know?
Mayor, you got to realize, if you're going to buy the company, I mean, I'm just saying, you're, you're saying if we get less than 10,000 population, which might allow us to get more grants, about a better chance of getting grants, but we may not get it either.
Well, we just got a $691,000 grant for our sewer. We're spending $200,000, and the same grant pot, sewer and water is in the same pot from the same source. So we've got that grant for, for sewer that's paying 80% of our sewer project, basically, then I think the same, we can, we can infer that the same thing might be possible. And if we had to, if a private company ran our sewer, I mean, actually operated, owned our sewer, then that $691,000 would have to be paid for by the people by going to the Public Service Commission and it would jack rates up. So that's my concern, is how much every time a private company, this has nothing personal to do with Peoples, but every time a private company spends $100,000 or $200,000 a year, that money's going to be passed on to the consumer directly, dollar for dollar. That's what rate increase requests do. I mean, this is just a reality. So we owe it to the citizens of Bastrop to look at possibilities like public-private partnerships. I asked the commission to look into that, I had a consultant, a consultant, a Washington consultant go into that, and we haven't had those tough discussions.
But we did have the commission do their job.
Yes, but they weren't available for questioning after, Mr. Patrick, yeah?
You know, it's no, no fault of the council or anything like that.
Yes, I understand, I understand. Because I-
What I'm saying is, we got to be careful that we don't push ourselves into a higher bracket of paying for water, and also-
Yes. Well, we just had a 37% increase, is it all 37% gone?
They only granted half of it, and that's contingent.
When's the other half coming?
First, we've got to spend $3 million, I just spoke about.
Okay, so that $3 million, when you petition the, the commission, you're petitioning a rate increase that's going to pay back the 300, the $3 million investment, is that correct, basically?
Over a period of time, yes.
Yeah, over time, yes, sir.
It's kind of like the city has, you know, the built-in rate increase on sewer, everything increases every, every year.
Right, yes, I understand that, I understand that.
You know, all, all the rates go up and it all paid for by the system.
Okay. Gentlemen, did you want to take any action tonight?
We can't, I think we need to go ahead and stop kicking the can down the road, and just go ahead and-
Address it?
Address it and just get rid of the photo.
Okay. Okay, I think that if we would project two meetings, and I think next meeting, if we could get a, because when someone gives you an agreement saying, sign this, is that what you do? You know, because, you know, there may be clauses in there that we need to, you know, we might need right of first refusal. There are things that this council has not talked about that we need to talk about. So when you sell, do we have a right to, to approve the guy, not, will this, because this says to Peoples or it's a signee's, and a signee is the guy who buys it the next day, maybe? And then you have to, you have to, then he comes in and, like the cable company did, lay off a bunch of folks and service deteriorates and all of that. These things happen in business.
But Mayor, if they, if you don't enter a contract, there's nothing keeping them from, you know, liquidating it and giving to somebody else. I mean, that, that doesn't-
I, I understand, I understand, but I think the city should have rights to protect itself in the event.
Well, I agree, and that's why you had a commission, and they did all the study, and we've been doing this for a year and a half now, and it's just-
Yes, sir.
-kicking the can down the road.
Yes, sir.
You know, you told me the other day, you're not a man to kick it down the road, you took care of them firemen that should have been took care of.
It's not over, that's not over. We, we, we don't believe in kicking the can, but we don't believe in leaving future administrations. There's a young man right there in our Leadership Bastrop Program. Can you stand up, sir? Yes. We have a program for young people who are going to be future leaders and future mayors and future, future state representatives, and, and we want to not leave them a mess, something to clean up. We want to not kick cans down the road.
Well, then you need to sign it, let's go. We'll be done with it if you don't want to kick the can.
Okay, Doyle.
You don't leave them a mess, then come on, let's go.
We're going to talk, we're going to talk. Gentlemen, so there's no action on this, is that what you're saying?
No action.
Okay, so I need a motion.
I move-
No, we don't need a motion, saying no action?
No.
So they can just, they can just say that out in the open?
To adjourn.
Yes, that's a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, fellas.
Thank you, Doyle, appreciate it. Item 17, can we get a motion to adjourn then?
Second.
Wait, who, who moved?
Mr. Locke. Mr. Locke moved that we adjourn, seconded by Councilman Shaw.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting's adjourned.
Let me see why your water bill's so cheap. Let me see why yours so cheap.
Much, I do.
$100, man, I paid 50.
Look, look, look at what I used, nothing.